Good evening, everyone. I'm going to get started. We're going to do the, uh, this is the first meeting. This is a second meeting from a spin-off earlier this summer regarding the community plan. It will actually be done in a year. It is one of the, um, number one part of the Super Bowl. To get this for an, um, the board meeting, that's why I adopted by the way. So, uh, for example, tonight it would be, uh, Gabriel, uh, yes, he can tell the about it for, um, for the town hall planning department. Uh, I guess if you're often, if you're not who I am, I am a man of honor. I am the resident of all the park workers with, uh, taller, um, to like that. So I want to remind this case was always that she is in the, uh, I feel like she needs any of you. Um, so that, uh, I guess we go over, come on, let's go. That is why here, I said, out here and then more of a, this time because the appeal and the building is a lot different than we all got, um, the golf course, uh, last, last time. Um, what more, if you have some questions or comments, we're going to introduce them right. And so when Gabriel was done with his presentation, I will have the mic and I'll run around the room, maybe give a little bit of, um, a moment to speak through the mic so you can capture the, with these three of you. Um, and then if you want to back that, okay, perfect. So the, uh, I'm just going to go with the video.
Thank you, I'm surprised you asked, everyone in, uh, this, uh, meeting. This is the second meeting, uh, that we have. First meeting, uh, I think, also, who had any contributions? Most of the comments, follow up comments, we're going to display this evening, so I can actually see what other people have said about the community plan. So far, there's been, uh, uh, they are applying into the current format, uh, that the plan is going to be not very lengthy, but I think full of details and information that's pertinent to members of this community. If there's anything you want to see in the community plan, we will include it because the plan is for members of the community, it's not my plan. My plan is to shrink it out of what is all mine, as I can see. If you have specific concerns, uh, anything regarding the community plan, uh, I just want to remind you that it does not replace the county's civic ordinance. The plan is to express the values, the goals, objectives of the member of the resident of the town hall, who are within that mountain area I've shown, uh, in the nearest town center. Uh, also, obviously, you're aware that we already have community plans in our agenda plan, so again, we don't want to deviate from our, from the format, uh, you know, any agenda plan. I will speak in very clear moments, uh, things that the community would like to see. And I hear this really, really important, uh, outside of the community development and, uh, by economics laws, uh, and bold space, I have comments about play area, children, comments about senior centers, uh, facilities, et cetera, et cetera, the search preservation, uh, uh, respecting the history of the community, uh, downtown development, and things like that. And that's really wonderful. This is how a plan actually goes along together. So, uh, I spent, uh, a few minutes doing, uh, through some of the comments that we received, that you can kind of get a flavor of what you've been seeing so far. And then, and I'm going to look at, go around, including the audience, to see, uh, who has additional comments. I have a writing form, this time I can basically, uh, under speaking of ideas, otherwise we write down and then we turn it on call. Uh, depending on the outcome of this meeting, uh, we may or may not, uh, infer that you have a consensus that we actually have enough information in this, in this module forward, then the next thing is, well, we will, uh, step up on our, uh, financial portion, and then you have another opportunity to, uh, in the commission, to express your concerns and questions, as this plan goes forward, we will, uh, and of course. Yes, sir.
My question is, you touched on this a little bit, that who is this document directed toward and how it will be used? Because, and I, and I ask that because as I read through the parameters of, of it, it appears that it's not for the general public so much as for the council or, and the planning department and the county. For example, if I, if I had a piece of property and I wanted to build a house on it, uh, I go to the county to get a building, and somebody going to pick up his plan and say, "Okay, yeah, you did this, you didn't do that," and did, I didn't see that as being a scenario where that might take place. I did, um, and again, things a lot of guys, for instance, preserve, preserve the history of the area. Oh, I can't do that. I mean, with the planning department and or the planning commission and or the developer. So, I didn't see that, for the most part, that that, that the plan applied to me as a, just a rest.
Thank you very much, let me address those concerns. Uh, the plan, I believe, is for you, because if we do not include those things in the plan, uh, it would be, it would be a, it would be a misfortune. Uh, when we see things like that, uh, the first thing I want you to understand is that the county still has a zoning ordinance. Most of the goals and policies you were finding in the plan, of taking power of the goals and policies in using the ordinance and degenerating itself. So there has to be consistency between the general plan and the plan. Uh, because there was a time, back in 2005, 2008, when the movement was to have community plans to place this over the ordinance, which means if you wanted to do anything in your community, you go through the, 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 the plan that said, "That's my discretion," and designing, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. People decided at that time that that wasn't a call, that they didn't really want to do that, so we, we had to skip it back, and we got where we are now, where this plan represents guiding points. So when we say, uh, respect and start of the structure, so when we have the development that comes through, we will go through the community plan, that's part of the process, and we will go through that, and see what, uh, not in particular, probably with all of the specs, you know, there's an I X, uh, we, 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 so, uh, runs to your question, that none is here. Okay, any other, any other questions?
Yeah, I have a question.
Okay, hold on to it.
I'm not going to.
Okay, I'm going to come through as I go.
Um, I am just curious to know what I'm going to see as this view, when you want to still consider rural agricultural ranch, or are you suddenly going to decide that this someone now needs to be commercial and, uh, higher than that? Because that's not what we're looking for, or you're being almost, you're being, being messed up. And so, maybe what you need is a very peaceful rural community, both in, count what we have, and every year we're getting a planning commission that is in terms of allowing us to come to the, 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 the,[627.12]
Can you do two phone runs, Ryan?
Sure. Oh, yes.
Okay.
Is that the first familiar concern? Yes, sir.
My question basically is, don't you have a map that shows what they're trying to do? And then each one of those sectors identified should be, uh, show. What is to be built where? When you have our one, multiple unit, mixed use, now that that should be on the map. They can draw circles here and get that to the doctor. Unless we finally have someone down to where's, uh, rest.
Thank you. So, um, we do have those maps, but that's the focus of this meeting. The focus of this meeting is to have a community plan in general. Uh, when the law is proposed, you come to Rockland, the county would notify and rest assets would be made by three hundred million years of all this time. So plans, landscaping, all those things that I just described will be made available. Uh, we'll have the Karen, the full set of the other side, we have the county department. So we have, um, uh, we have opportunity to manage that, but that is not quite here. So there, that's the problem, the community plan itself. So thank you again. If you need further information, if you need any further, I would like to help. If you want.
Uh, I don't quite understand what the community plan is. Will that happen, this type of map? That shows, uh, wants to go back.
Okay. So the community plan is not a plan to build. The community plan is a plan that expresses goals, objectives, uh, policies, desires, history, all of these that will shape future planning and community development. So if you're not going to find a community plan, uh, something that says, um, this particular site is going to build a few different departments. You're not going to see that in the community plan. Whereas the community plan will be, uh, a policy that encourages development called multi-family residential.
So we're down, 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 what we call the road wall down there.
So we show them basically in a certain color and with, uh, that's data is mostly used. Here, you have that single, that business, that business, all of this, and that would take care of itself.
Yeah.
And it said, uh, I am visiting the exercise for the laboratory effort where all of those of you are considered. And no one can view our perspective that makes the process. This is the only way that I think there can be consensus in bringing forward a community plan. I have to agree with you that a new plan has to be, uh, has to have, uh, a few things defined. And everyone is respected, is respected. Uh, with that being said, my first concern is what Rockland should protect the integrity of this volatile community. And I think everybody here this evening would agree with that, uh, the, the protecting of Rockland's access volatile community should be optimal. When both that opposition protection in the county, uh, we are looking at a older accumulation, uh, of, uh, by the year twenty forty, uh, not very many more, uh, residents than we currently have. So, and, and the reason why there is a lift on our growth is because of infrastructure. Uh, the highway board leasing through our town is only two and five years. There is no place in the county that has four vehicles. That's the nasty two lanes, uh, lowering one direction and two lanes going into the other direction. We don't have that. Mostly developed, mostly the roadways in our county are windy roadways. We don't have bull waters. We don't have a lot of traffic signals. We have stop signs. So these represent, uh, all the areas of community, uh, small, rural, uh, but we're trying to do things to make us relevant. You could be small, we could be rural, but we need to be relevant. Uh, my second concern is affordable housing. So we have two issues there, uh, integrity of the community plan and affordable housing. A percentage of development should be affordable and out of our households of the country and low income. A developer being these requirements probably of anything means that may include paying an annual fee of second construction, line of education, or acquisition in behalf of existing units. These are non-sustainable offerings, my community plan, it's my hope that they are really considered and implemented. And I have to agree with you, uh, these are very, very good work. One of the truths of that the county has, and as we do in the last, my state, uh, is what's called desert purpose. So when you come and you want to build units in the county, uh, we can offer you, uh, if one's increasing the number of units to build, if you get any, if there's units to, you know, no big entrepreneurs, college students, and people off of street income. So we already have a program. Again, the challenge we have is finding those people who actually want to do their special development. Uh, we have the county's, uh, subsidy funds, uh, we are gonna try to make some, uh, some additional resources that we can pass on to developers who would like to, uh, develop in the county. So, uh, this is a very good comment. Uh, there was a very good comment, uh, let's see, I'm just scrolling a little bit up to see what that comment is and what that comment is for. This comment is from Janet Jones Sterling. Uh, Janet Jones Sterling said, uh, husband and I have been copper office last events for twenty-three years. Is Janet Jones here this evening? Uh, we have lived in the county for several belt eyes. Felt among upper employees says relocated three or four days where we do have a small branch, forty-two acres. I have reviewed both community plans, one of them had a vibrant citizens of copper representative lines department in 2022. And the county community plan was released and created for a show in the day of May the 30th. We support the many positive aspirations of the copper office community expressed in the vision of policy in the travels community plan. However, when possible, we will request the county to delete the positive aspirations in the community plan policies to add some incremental measures powered by those advisors in twenty nineteen's calendar plan. These were now mainly aspirations to come early on. And I have to tell you that mostly those end up just in files and stuff. You see the community plan as from, uh, Janet's plan. So I did not give you great them as Janet's policy, but as it came from. And, uh, also some other additional comments that I've heard by most prominent members of the community already lived in that plan. Additionally, we would ask that the basic terms that can encourage and support the exchange of words that commit the county to achieve the plant's most best version plan. Ensure, employ, buy, lease, require, and secure. Again, this will help make the aspirations we have a job. Thank you. Further, we rely on the community plan for reference in the keeping of small and atmosphere. This is another small and atmosphere comment. That commit the county to achieve the plant's most best version, uh, which, uh, which is why people live here. The town, uh, is a small town, of course, the place is rural. We just start in keeping with the intended meaning and youth now. This subject matter came up at our last town hall meeting where some people preferred one word or the other. Uh, and I think they prefer rural in small town, well, it's quite personal, but I had my dose of that being, and that's perhaps why you would see that change. Uh, the term small town, uh, rural, female, rather large town, forty thousand, fifty thousand people. This is not what they're representing from copper one. Perhaps the only we should say is small town and rural. So we, uh, we're not implying that we want forty or fifty thousand people in our town. You begin with fifty thousand people in copper office. Uh, you have, you have terrain, you have issues with, with, uh, with infrastructure that may have. There are forty-five thousand people in the entire county. So the largest area of the county is perhaps, uh, population wise, is perhaps, uh, in the mountains. And then you maybe dangerous yet is not, uh, we didn't see every stone, but every other community is between three and five thousand. So fifty thousand people in copper office is not enough. Uh, yes, thank you. Uh, and, uh, this is not all the residents of copper one, et cetera, et cetera, and also in the town. So which we, I think, they're so far, we're on the same page. Uh, one, um, is from, uh, yeah. Let me see, um, is better here this evening?
Ask Melinda.
Yes. If you do. Very wonderful.
She's not.
Okay. I appreciate the level of effort that I'm in the drawing and re, uh, applying especially by the open season preserve and the history and environment of copper area. I also like the suggestion to put this service station in the town and create banking assets and trails around the community. Institute that benefit charging stations are, are also included. Uh, I wish the plan was most specific in terms of specific costs and resources. Or we probably do the cost where it happens that unfortunately when the asset or business you have there are still shown water. This will be included in the future, really, those who construct their projects. So when, uh, that would happen, one, the county could ask to renew our gas measures that we are gonna be taking, uh, to the front of the nation in, you know, for us. Our goals of, of making a forty percent recovery of nineteen nineteen and nineteen ninety vision. So by twenty, twenty thirty, twenty, twenty thirty-five, yeah. We, we need to reintroduce our things. So, um, and if we do those things, we get additional resources, uh, for so long, our electric charging and things that maybe community funds, we have that. Uh, one of the things that I actually mentioned as we thought my eye was, um, in that part for the benefit of the entire town. I did not know that I needed to fill out the part of this. I assume that we do have them. Uh, infrastructure improvement that reviews, uh, dependence on propane. Well, you're talking pretty much the same facts here. Uh, therefore, the old town to be stored where one of the floors is very reservation of this. We are, yeah, this is an example of a structure that was preserved from the eighteen sixties. Ma, uh, map markers of the whole lines in copper. Even the river danger wire qualifiers, we have, uh, I know it's only one community plan to take care of that. I added a dear community center for elders, if necessary, uh, and, uh, that's only not for the communities to use. A cooling center, we need a program, uh, screen tools, water facilities, like a basket for all these. So, yeah, these are, these are good things, these are good things that you like sleeping your community plan. And I, I appreciate those who are taking, uh, the time to, uh, provide this comment. Uh, we actually provided our big row, uh, letter, uh, and, uh, this was, uh, from Tommy Lucino representing, uh, comments we have with Alvers Plan and Board. Specifically, you know, here this evening? Tom? Okay. Uh, so we went through the background of, uh, you know, the community plans since nineteen ninety-two. We also had the history of how to let's get into the absence of goals. Uh, uh, copper office community plan, very much, uh, CPC at first, we existed, was the best research study. Plan expressed in your vision, golden policy, any kind of tracks, community plan for copper office. We look at these positive aspirations of the main decline and are definitely better goers to the question. Well, I, I'm sure you will be nowadays, you guys, we're ready to make sure that, uh, your wishes, uh, are incorporated into the plan. Uh, as Peter, the session before this line, this skill that can't really live. The positive aspirations of the main decline policies to act, communication measures are available for in twenty nineteen's calendar plan. Again, uh, what's seen in main decline to flat through all the twenty-nine year old policies in the calendar plan. Uh, as Peter, the session before, these people that can't really replace one of the basics, where's life and current as before, with where's that content? They can't achieve mine's most best version and sure. So again, we're seeing passing, uh, uh, higher. Uh, yeah, make a positive aspect of the counties made thirteen track plan. Uh, in, in, in fact, we was believing, uh, the council has displayed your local book and having new plan in the bottom of, uh, in the Joe two. That used to define the course to any other positive aspirations of twenty thousand and five track plan. Uh, the plans are included, the target population, forty thousand people in the present and on the plan. Uh, we took, we are, uh, in twenty twenty-three, uh, the council's population has, uh, again, I am a nothing of the wrong base, using the fourth person in the role, uh, any time soon. Uh, but those, those comments really look at and are being considered. Uh, uh, creative vision, uh, many of the ones over this year, CPC draft, which probably gave them a wire about, uh, community plan. Even our involvement, education training, uh, good things we have to make community plan aesthetics, natural resources, traffic circulation, uh, uh, historic representation. So we have a consensus as we, as we bring along, uh, we're liking the housing goals, we're liking the community, uh, community services goals, uh, circulation, uh, housing, uh, public safety. Uh, we hope the county fix the weakness in enabling your private plan. Uh, the land is for our, it's a far more expensive than usually our reason on the map. And so they are confusing. Uh, they want us to work into the community division, uh, to keep a small and not unfair, they can address that. Um, converting community goals. Uh, the community goals are separated from the community policies, as a democracy, each goal is supported by a policy. This can reduce goals with no policy involved further. For example, there's a goal to consider side high square station in copper, but it's no policy state. Who will do the study, you know, when it will be done? For example, of how about policies and community measures should follow those in the city corner, most established by the plan. I'm hoping to fly in my second sitting. Uh, other economic development goals, uh, it talks about the addition of the vision that you want to want is too big. Uh, there's no mention of the reference building, uh, to be used, you, you are maybe sorry this time. And that can down the front, what we do without a certain, uh, sort of reservation ordinance. Uh, the word in corners is used instead of the word ensure. Again, uh, when you see words like that, you find there's a constant words in the county's term. Uh, public safety goals, uh, housing goal, community plan policies, uh, non-legal housing policies, uh, are often repeating that same thing, uh, use accent words, uh, circulation, Oakland, there are any public facilities. There are no level difficulties or intervention tasks at any policy, not in a high rate you're hoping to get down the grocery road. Um, when it comes to kind of specifying these kinds of things in a community plan, it takes a lot more work and a lot of the need to, uh, to get a traffic signal or a stop sign within the block from, uh, county. So, you know, the community cannot say you want a stop sign over here, county is gonna simply have to do a stop. So there's a process to be followed. Uh, housing policy, it's not clear why it's getting separated from the housing. There are no clear objectives and implementation tasks identified. And that, that is because, uh, the county doesn't build housing, housing construction is, is typically right of our debt. But we do have them, we want to make sure that implements these total policies. Uh, constitution and administrative policies, again, we're in the first, more action, quality safety, a critical support, uh, etc., etc. Uh, said, uh, uh, the, 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 we're assuming we're pressing on the government. It's one of the gathering, uh, something that showed the rest. Well, we have thirty years of this plan. I'm aware that this is, uh, a plan, um, along the, along the way of plan. And we take all the information that we have gathered here and included in the plan. Uh, the amount of, uh, basically.
Gabriel?
Yesterday.
Please, before you can speak, where do you think, and it may be awesome, you just look it up on the website.
It's there.
The writers, they go and bring them and they don't count.
It's, it's on.
I just completely missed the two days of planning and raising loud. On any of the ones that were provided, um, they came on, but they, they did not know the protection of mine.
They were, they were, yeah.
If you go, if you go directly to the, um, county website and the county department, and you'll get that.
But, you know, okay, this, this is getting a little mean.
So Gabriel, considering that it looks like all the comments that are about my, uh, even after me, who is happening to me. Oh, God. Well, the one that's stuck there. Can, can I say hello, Ryan?
Yes.
Please.
Hi, everybody, I'm even happy to be one type resident of copper office.
Pick it up, Ryan, I heard you.
Sorry. Okay. Um, we've been full time residents, uh, so I guess we've got sixty years. But I actually discovered the summer story helped on the summer with only copper code and hook to flat. We only have seven divisions here. So, okay, two hundred and fifty. That's very, that's a good interest there. Uh, if you go to the county website, planning department, general plan, you will find copies of the, uh, community plan drafts as well as all the talks that were submitted by the July seventh day. Including my eight pages, thousands in edits. Uh, one of my former talks, I used to be an editor anyway, or so, I can't do anything without editing the head edit. So a good portion of, of, um, my edits documents were nearly that. And asking for some of the words to be more action oriented as opposed to, um, visual. So, uh, I'm giving it to the secretary. I think the sum of our history was a little bit lengthy. We probably minimize that and look at some of our recent history. Uh, our community vision, um, goes with just words in a little bit different perspective of, um, from a community person about where our vision truly is. Um, I added a couple of paragraphs. I think one of the things we talked about in last meeting was, or I should say restaurant was talked about. It even the last, um, review was the desire, the potential development of access to new monies from copper office design. Whether or not we're reported against it, it's been a lot of work, um, over the last ten, twelve years to consider how that could happen. And I think that is a very viable project to consider if we really wanna look at economic growth in copper office. So the community vision, um, or community, economic development, and it's important that we mention it there. Hmm, sorry. Almost getting used. Um, I think transportation and circulation in copper office is important. It's, uh, it's always been important to me and it's obviously very important to everybody that's been here in this meeting. But we've talked only enough words. We know that, um, egress out of our community in the event of emergency is a really, is, I kind of cut through the topic field to get that out, but it's not, you can't have that option. I think the other thing that we need to consider when we talk about circulation is, uh, sidewalks. Sideways are those who do like to walk, those who have to walk from, uh, to our, our strip hall and Etc. P G A. Uh, we have courses added on some of our smaller acreage, so, you know, one acre, third, third of the acreage or five acres or not. Down in the point of user, come on, uh, harder problems. So, uh, pedestrian pathways, pedestrian walkways and bicycles. I think more might have to be that we can do so safe. So, again, I encourage you to go to the county website to get these documents. Personally, for me, um, I think the two most important pieces, three most important pieces to share, um, are the community vision. One topic that's often discussed amongst gatherings here in copper office is the lack of public mechanics. Several subdivisions have their own clubhouse or mini parks. Uh, the law for sword is a gated community with only often restaurant available to public. And the open greatest market, well, name is available for rent and as limited usability. A common vision that would benefit all residents as opposed to just seniors, um, that would benefit residents and visitors to copper is essentially located in true community center with outdoor recreation space. That is available to any resident in progress of the subdivision where they reside. Uh, the core of this community center would be a structure large enough to which community events, large parties. It could include separate meeting rooms with small gathering areas. Quilt could be art classes, mentally different, whatever they may be. Um, it should be large enough to accommodate an appropriately sized library and potentially the auxiliary service halls as well. Uh, be available, we have access and know the meeting rooms in copper is minimal. Uh, again, I share some of the potential uses. The location doesn't entirely accommodate the current student, that's not location, so they don't have to stand out in the elements. I drive down China and copper code, I work, I work every day. It's kind of walking from a bit of China all the way around to home to huddle one street right for a bus. And then others of them walking down the strip hall where they stand in the parking lot, friend of the pub, waiting for a bus. Uh, these are all things that I personally think would have been the hardest, copper as a community. Um, a paid career to allow a walking or exercise on an even surface. Where we're interested to learn, ride a motorcycle, bicycle without danger of being in traffic. And then talk of animal, we socialize and a lot of play and maybe even swim off leash. Uh, there are many possibilities for the use of this space. It's imperative that it be centrally located to ensure decent access in all community members. Uh, transference, up and down, boat, street, etc. Um, as I said, the connection to new monies. It provides an opportunity to relieve traffic on late night. Lots of economic growth opportunities, whether with rate of tackle, cancer development, concessionaires, specialty, outdoor recreations, overhand accommodations, and the list goes on. Um, by adding such a statement to our community plan, it will also support the general plan. Uh, goal of promoting the overall accommodations, commercial activity, creating jobs, middle and small business and startups. Lastly, as Brett continues in copper and in the county, consideration should be made to improve highway for those down in the area or those very rich. The egress lockers are limited and I need impairment that we consider community safety. Uh, and egress should be the highway for or one way you come inside. That's pretty much, uh, the gist of what I love, community plan should conclude. I think some of what you all have said is, you know, also included in there. So director Elliot, I offer that for your further evidence. Anything we're putting here.
Thank you. So, um, I, I think we've kind of displayed, uh, the, the, the theme of some of the comments we've received. Uh, now I haven't heard some of those comments, uh, is there any other, uh, different points to you in the room that we need to consider? Is there something that we have thought of, that we should be thinking about? And, um, super awesome, well, we'll, uh, we'll start with you and then, um, to you.
Um, I see, uh, I submit a big comments to you. And I understand you're supposed to be communicating, but comments are more than a piece of the conversation. If your purpose is to share the comments that you receive.
Wasn't we wanting to see, wasn't we wanting to see what Alvers said? So I posted, uh, these comments online, but some people didn't see that. So I figure, you know, for transparency purposes, we'll just kind of share what comments that we've received so far and then here.
Does that mean yes, you are reading those comments you received? Does that mean yes, you are reading those comments you received?
Yeah.
Is that another comment that people wanted to comment back? And so one of you feel. Just have a comment. Hey, before I have not seen those emails, I appreciate you discussing this tonight. Maybe you already covered this in the first meeting, but is there a improved budget for the community plan that you can hold and is it a phased in budget? And then my second question is, I read about this in my own room. Is there a better way to notify citizens of copper office about this? Because for the representation, there's like, should be more people? In the past, they just don't know.
Well, all of those questions, I took a look at the doctor's report. This is probably one of the best people ever. The ones who have had a visit this way to show that I feel free to pass out to get out of along in the general. It is all part of the community plan. We have a value for the plan, which was about the value and show this likely to this computer plan. The power will be with the board. And then in a value type of show, we're talking about. And the theme, I think, and to cover the whole what we give in a presentation of where we are at in various access to the community plan and related to the game type of community. I keep the structure. So it is moving, it is a level of accountability that will be pushed out, so it is the end. Oh, yeah. So they started from last meeting. More people wanted to see the paper on video. We provide mail, social media, CCTV, the TV. They put out a lot of news. And that coming from an asset of, uh, YouTube. So we did, you know, it was like, how could we possibly be all in the video? So we would be quite on top of the book. A lot of people didn't ask why we do it, but then that not harsh, that we should to allow them to come on and be happy. Do you know how change the, 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 the? So now you know, uh, so you, 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 you. Again, I guess we, the, 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 the.
And so I've seen a lot of what, what, what plans and proposals and ideas. Obviously, not everything that should be in the current process could select to be added at a physical.
Are we going to continue with the comments you're seeing?
I think. Right, right. I think we have kind of lost through. And we've said the theme, which is youth, fashion, language. People asked for the sections today. They want for the sections to be, to kind of put that additional information. So we are going to do that. We expect that it hasn't changed the context of the other lines now. And then we will, we'll like move forward because it seems like we have a lot of the chances on what's in the plan, on the supply chain process. Next thing we do, if this plan can move forward, we go through final mission review approval and then it goes for the borders process. And then finally, with additional opportunities to come to the meeting, trustee area, and get the policy sent out to include any additional clients you may have before that one actually has proof. The bottom line is, this is not my photograph of copper office, it is my plan. My job is just to consult the copper information, make any errors, not to insist that we know the future costs, not to know the general cost.
And to give to you that part of your case, what are the priorities, what are the goals? And afterwards, trying to go out to the door.
It seems like I need to think the comments that I had you. It's a different perspective. We need to respect all your.
It's a day.
Oh, my, my.
It's a day, I mean, it's in the past, yeah. You remember that that day we had those comments? I was sitting at the computer and I was putting down anything. So the comments we just went through today are comments that came after your comments. Well, your comment specifically is in the plan about respecting property rights and non-legal and consideration there.
So there are other comments that were not.
First of all, the reason we see plan in the end in the most specific, you know, that is growing with our plans, which is more not necessarily all best. And we say, and this is that the CEO of the mayor of the finance, so it could be most specific. She will be talking economic development. We can be in case, you know, this is a role well and but we're not, you know, business. What we see in it is just a very general, you know, we want to have remote. Economic development, I think, like this doesn't seem to allow anything. And we are just being precise.
If you all want to add.
I was showing through, I'm sorry. But summarize, I'm not showing through there. I was trying to listen to you.
It was basically because the community plan in the end would be more specific, especially for all the economic development. We just see, you know, more positive, more than comes. But it doesn't say anything else completely directly to get the point, you know, what I was saying. See, our is planning.
Well, there are some aspects of the community plan that are specific.
We never, that we move on to the other difficulty.
Right. And in itself, it is our totally dependent on who comes into our town with those kinds of jobs and everything. And one thing we now, now we can consider is that why are economic problems? It has to serve the residents of the community. And you have, you know, and if our major issue here is we want a viable job. So we are going to attract natural businesses that generate jobs. And then you have different industries. You want to go into the hotel industry. You want to go into other kinds of industries that have to provide people. We want to build factories, then we want factories where we can build, we can bring in passengers, we can encourage facilities. So it's huge negative to Mazinach or all. Oh, yeah. We're a better of the clock. We have ADR seven hundred and fifty. We have nine thousand dollars generated by the plan. We want people, but that is an industry that can. Have you been to other industries like one which is percent?
Yes, but I mean, it's not like many industries that have been hit with the rule of capital. This is the long goal. To be able to, it's not a.
Oh, yeah, there could be industries that would fit in the rule of, of the power.
But it's not taking the pleasure, you know, because the general dynamic is so, the community plan is so great.
Right, right. Well, I mean, it's, it's next to the town. Well, we have to get everyone to do that. And if what we bring anything into the community, community members get that sick. So if we bring in a walkie, a job manager here and you and he say they don't want this, that's not, that's not.
It would be next.
Well, we have, we have other final mission meeting. You guys have invited them, you have to have a say on the progress itself. And if your life is sick, the building margins get cleared out and we will, we will.
Does anyone know we can be against it?
Oh, well, I mean, you know what, or some of them, well.
Who chose?
Yes.
Yes, yeah, yeah. Okay. All right, next. Any other questions? Yes, sir. Yeah, I was looking for the comments you made on the first one. But finally, I'll show.
That comment had to do with the US Constitution and that there's nothing in this general plan that would hold the right to guarantee in the US Constitution, which I believe like already.
Yeah, first, the rights.
Yeah, that was the comment. I have a little one that has to do with the law of Bill. We have an example of successful little house housing. I'm going to read it to you. There's a unit A in copper code. This is where the three people who serve us are. The rent's about eighty hundred dollars to fifty hundred. Where if you went to anywhere else, you're looking, you're like two thousand to thirty five hundred. So if we, if we can allow more developments of, of, you know, small forces, where they can have a little mall or trade, then we'll be able to help the small.
I mean, that's said really loudly and really. When you consider little housing, you have to think about what does little housing really look like? And it's clearly it's that you do that in a mobile park. And mobile law parks, we have plenty of them in vast areas, lots of very large areas. So even the light ones, they grow more as a part of certain elements. It's, you know, critically uncounted, but we like that. And fear, in fact, people have a fear for little housing as well. And that is what we don't use for, for those houses. We use warlords because when we go into the county and retail, restaurants, that are early for new housing projects, they are totally against it. And for the life of me, I cannot really follow this. And it's happened on several issues. I just couldn't figure it out in some areas of all this. So when we talk about the aspirations of the community, we also have to talk about what are we going to be tolerant of? We were thinking about building small companies and some people are like, I've done a lot of small companies, you know, a lot of certain things. So how can we not definitely point to where we serve every member of this community without integrating other members of the community? And that is what the housing act really is serving. Any other questions regarding the community plan? I really have. What's going to happen now is that we will consolidate all the original meetings. So through all the edits, we will have one more pronouncement, one more convenient meeting that will identify all the things that I mentioned, these things. We will use passive words, rather than passive words. We will try to address to the extent possible some of the comments that we were receiving. Do you have a comment?
I'm just wondering, are you, will you entertain another comment?
Yes.
Before the next?
Yes.
So you'll be getting more comments?
Yes, I will make several more comments based on the comments on the post that I'm on that you see and we discussed about today. So I'm personally, how long do you think we should kind of comment?
At least two days.
Okay, well, yeah, about fifteen days, seven. So we have an opening comment period, a closing comment period, and then we take that as an occasion and clarify the reasons for other documents, which would be footwear iteration of the community plan. And then the post that I'm outside and we'll have this. But if you reveal that I'm a guy who knows what this is not productive, I'd love to see what's on mine and make comments to them. That's going to be. Okay, Rob, any comments? Very, I'm here. Any, any other comments? So I'm ready to leave. Oh, there.
Do you have one, like, from the map?
Okay, the map. I just wanted to read one of the comments that I'm telling you. I think since you, Krista, and I have tested best view of what was mentioned the most time, what was the role of rest in this year? We don't only have a thing of a Santa Claus or a Christmas that we want to see in this community, but we also have a, that these are, and it doesn't have to be money, whatever, they can't be included. They look me raw, unspecific. But at least it gives the board a better idea of are you going to focus and also the others who want to look for this area, have a better idea of what it is.
Absolutely. Thank you. So I think, I'll do any kind of comment that you didn't see tonight or your opinion, whatever, that you said you want to add to. And again, we'll be opening it up again with a comment that we've been back with. For those of us who are new, can you put on a map like you did with an overlay of development and future development so that we can know if we're looking for a future in the present community plan? Over with, we'll see. You did it, you know, or not. And I do, we both appreciate you all, Victor, and giving the feedback that you've been doing with us and don't have a photo, and we're really glad. Don't do this, but I'm glad you were.
The quality of the map is, maybe I'll watch about date to what we're on, um, because I look, I let. So the last thing, we're getting a lot of questions about why we feel, which is how we work right here. So we can't, it's quite a human spanning and not that long. But we did, we had a whole lot of people who just made it. It's a good fact that a lot of the name in the background, you know. So then, so we have the old, the old, the, 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 the. We cannot, we couldn't come down, we didn't, so. So there are a lot of working on it. We just going through a lot of.